Good evening and welcome to this July 8, 2024, meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Looks like we have a new theme song, so that is nice. Thank you very much to all those involved. Roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson is not here, okay. Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you, and if you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Molinar, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next, we will have community and school reflections. Does anyone have any community and school reflections? Mr. Perry.
Mine will be brief. I was out this weekend at a place on Kenmore Boulevard. Shout out to Tina Boyas. Garfield High School was celebrating the 20-year class reunion from 1994, I guess that would have been, no? 2004. And so I just want to congratulate them. They had about 50 members that came and they celebrated for a while. There's some congratulations, Garfield class of 2004.
Thank you. Any other reflections? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. My first reflection is I want to say thank you to everyone involved in providing our kids with the weekly readers. My kids came home with each with a full workbook to last through the summer, and I'll tell you, it really helped us get through this long holiday weekend. Anytime there's a break or in the car too long, we had our weekly readers and even some, we still have some of our materials that were sent home during COVID, some of the math materials sent home, and I was able to use those, and I just felt so lucky to be part of a district that sends these things home with our students to fill in that summer learning gap and opportunities that we have at home. I meant to bring them with me. I left them in my car because that's where we use them the most, but thank you for everyone involved in sending that home for our students. And I also want to say, summer camps, we had a bunch of new summer camps start again today. So I was outside today watching students go into Mystery Camp and Mad Science Camp and Art Sparks and 3D Printing Camp and all kinds of camps. And the kids are really excited. They come home even more excited. They're having a great experience with their summer learning and their summer friendships. And another thing, though, is it's hard going sometimes from camp to camp as I'm standing outside listening to other parents with all the different apps. So last week, we used Class Dojo. This week, we use Remind. This camp is using WhatsApp or Band. I think a parent said some of the older kids that have stuff, they're using Discord. And so if we have opportunities, I don't know if through our Google subscription or through our All Call subscription or anything else we're doing to try to consolidate the way that we're communicating to families or with families having that from the classroom to the student to the parent communication, I think that would be really helpful. But other than that, wonderful, wonderful experience, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Molinar. Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to just shout out LeBron James and Bronny James for making the NBA really exciting. You know, we work hard to make sure our children have a future, and if we can open up doors for our children, why not? So shout out to LeBron for that. And while we're talking about LeBron, I do also want to say congratulations to Anthony Clayder. He's the first LeBron and Kent State's first I Promise college graduate. Also, House 330, beginning this week, Secret Pizza inside House 330 will be now open every day for lunch from 11:00 to 2:00. So stop by House 330 for some pizza, which is delicious. Secondly, tomorrow is the first kickoff for Taco Tuesday. Hope LeBron doesn't see this or hear me just destroy that, but it's also, they have Taco Tuesday, every Tuesday now from 11:00 to 2:00. So make sure you guys are stopping down at House 330 to support what they are doing in our community. Thirdly, one more thing that they're doing awesome is on Tuesday, July 16, the LeBron James Family Foundation, Access Point, and Colwell Health Services are proud to welcome the all-new I Promise headquarters. It's an all-in-one community health center providing medical, dental, ophthalmology, and mental health services for the entire Akron community. So it's not just for the foundation, it's for our whole community. And that's what it's all about, is being able to do something and touch everyone in the city of Akron. So shout out to LeBron James Family Foundation and Michelle and Ms. Victoria that are here also. The Health Services Grand Opening will be Tuesday, July 16, at 3:30. So come on out, support what they're doing in our community, and let's make this successful. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other reflections? None? Okay. And so I don't have anything other than to remind everybody to make sure that you stay nice and cool and hydrated. I unfortunately had an incident. I actually was on the way to a family reunion, and I was looking up the signs and symptoms of heat stroke and exhaustion so I could be prepared as a nurse in case any of my family members would need my assistance. But turns out, I was the one who needed assistance. And so it was really, really hot. And so luckily, my family members were there to assist me, but it was a little scary. I didn't know a body can get that hot, and I'm a nurse. But I just want to remind everybody, stay hydrated and stay cool. And so that will conclude my community reflections. Next item on our agenda are recognition of our Distinguished Employee Emeritus. Each year, the Akron Board of Education expresses its appreciation to all career educators retiring from active service. Emeritus certificates are awarded to those educators who have completed a minimum of 30 years' employment in the field of education, with at least 25 of them in the Akron Public Schools. Certificates of appreciation are awarded to all other retirees regardless of years of service, honoring their contributions to the development of youngsters in the school system. The Akron Board of Education presents the Distinguished Employee Emeritus Certificate to the retiree with the most years of service in each of the following categories: elementary school teacher, middle school teacher, high school teacher, physical education, special education, central office administrator, central office, field administrator, office support, educational assistant, custodian, foreman, maintenance, buildings and grounds, child nutrition, and transportation. And so this evening, each one of the board members is going to present the Distinguished Employee Emeritus Certificate to the following individuals. And we will start off first, I believe, with you, Mr. Alexander, presenting to James Donald. Mr. Donald, if you are here, please come to the podium.
You know, I asked if I could present this one because this gentleman here is a longtime friend of mine. We went to high school together. He was like my protector. I don't know if you guys know about the Bad Boys of Detroit in the NBA, Bill Laimbeer. This is my Bill Laimbeer right here. And Jamie has been a good friend. We've been friends for a long time, close friends. It's a group of us that are really close. So this is for James Donald. James Donald was initially hired by Akron Public Schools to substitute teacher in 1984. Two years later, 1986, he was hired as a full-time physical education teacher. He initially worked split assignments at Kraus, Windermere, and Case Elementary Schools. In 1995, he moved to Readinger Middle School where he taught for the next 13 years. In 2009, he returned to elementary school where he worked at Firestone Park, at Firestone Park, Smith, Kraus, and David Hill Elementary Schools. He retired from Firestone Park Elementary. In addition, in addition to his classroom responsibilities, James worked as an activity supervisor and trimile director, track coach, and the school treasurer at Readinger Middle School. During his lessons, students were continuously provided feedback, positive feedback. He supported not only physical education skills, but also their skills development in the class. He wanted all his people, everyone to know that he did have LeBron James in his elementary class, in his class at Readinger Middle School. Akron Schools thanks James Donald for 38 years of dedicated service, and I know him personally, so I know he gave a lot to the kids, and I know they will miss him. And so, James, this is for you.
No, I just, you always pray and hope that you'll have an impact on kids. For me, I lucked out because it was a long time, so probably hundreds, really probably thousands of kids. I'm an Akron Public School kid, so if you count how many years this is, and add 12 years to that, I've been a part of this community for 50, 50-some years.
Wow.
So just on North Hill, right on the other side of the bridge. It's funny how fast time goes. I'll thank my wife for all the stories that she was able to hear. They were different every day. If I had a story, never the same. Also, it's really ironic about Reading her because there's somebody that's going to present tonight that is a Reading your student of mine, Donnie, right? Go away about, he has something really cool for you guys to hear. I didn't know that was going to happen tonight, but it's really good. It's especially rewarding when you see somebody, well, I always see Bruce, so Bruce is good. But when you see somebody that you had in class and you always envisioned, what are they doing 20 years from now? You're going to have to listen to his story because it's going to be good. All right? Thank you.
Next, for middle school, we're going to have Karen Hazlet. Karen joined the Akron Public Schools in 1986 as a fifth-grade teacher at Kraus Elementary. After working for 25 years in elementary school, she became a teacher at Miller South for the Performing Arts. She left Miller South to be a gifted and talented teacher at Sam Salem Elementary for one year. She then returned to Miller South where she remained until her retirement. Karen's focus has always been to help her fifth-grade students master the English Language Arts curriculum and standards by providing quality instruction for them in the classroom. She provided a book club for them to expand the skills they learned in the classroom. She was also an advocate for partnering music with the academic side of education. She encouraged the students to be active participants in the band. She attended band concerts and also played in the band with the students as well. Thank you, Karen, for 38 years of service to the Akron Public Schools.
Oh, gosh, they gave me the microphone. That's not a good thing. I do want to say that I actually have been teaching for 44 years total because I taught at St. Paul's Catholic School for my first five years of teaching. So I'm at 44. But that I love every minute, my friend Laura is here to support me, but I love every minute of what I did. I'm having, what do they call it, buyer's remorse a little bit, you know, that because I'm going to miss it more than I can possibly say. I see one of my students. Is that Whitman back there? It's one of my students. See, yes, Whitman Sullivan. But I'm going to miss every second of it. Hopefully, I'll find something else fun to do. But I thank you so much for this award. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our high school teacher, Carl Oberdorfer, presented by Board Member Joel Perry.
Okay, we're still going to read this, though?
Yes.
So Carl Oberdorfer worked outside the district for three years and was a substitute teacher for the Akron Public Schools before being hired as a full-time foreign language teacher in 1993. He was certified to both teach French and Spanish. He primarily taught Spanish at both the middle school and high school levels. His initial assignment in 1993 was at Central Howard High School. He moved to Perkins Middle in 1996 for 10 years before moving to Kenmore High School. In 2015, he became the Spanish teacher at CLC, where he remained until his retirement. Carl was a team player. He was approachable to the students and fellow staff members. He worked hard at helping students learn the Spanish language. He was a teacher who would listen to the students and try to help them. He was a team player with staff members and administrators. If you needed his assistance, he was ready, willing, and able, a true team player. The Akron Public Schools thank you, Carl, for 31 years of service and dedication to the district. Thank you, Carl.
Our next presentation is from Board Member Sykes for Special Education Teacher Kathy Moran.
Hi, Kathy. Great, great. You'll get over it. It is my pleasure, Kathy, to present you as a Special Education Distinguished Employee Emeritus Certificate. Kathy was originally hired by the Akron Public Schools as a substitute teacher in 1988. She became a full-time teacher in 1990. Her first teaching assignment was as an orthopedics handicap teacher at Barrett School. She remained at Barrett until it closed. She then went to Barbara Elementary School where she was a multiple disability orthopedics impaired teacher, starting in 2013. She remained in this assignment until she retired. Kathy taught children with low cognitive skills and various physical impairments. She worked hard at helping them with to adapt to skills that would help them learn the curriculum being presented to them. Some of her students were nonverbal, and she was able to assist them as well. She was a champion in getting her students involved in everyday school events. She wanted school to be fun. I knew you were fun. I knew you were fun. An engaged experience for her children. Her children were very special to her. Kathy will be missed at Barbara and CLC. Her dedication to the children will always be a standard for others to follow. The Akron Public Schools say thank you, Kathy, for your 34 years of service, and congratulations.
Just saying, just saying thank you, and I'm an Akron native, too. I'm a Kenmore, the real Kenmore, 1983, the real Kenmore, the original Kenmore. Went to University of Akron, taught for Akron Public Schools, always Akron. So I'll be back in the fall, and I miss my boys this year. I had lots of boys.
Thank you. Our next recognition is for Central Office Administrator Terry Porter by Board Member Dr. Molinar.
I'll just read it then. So Terry Porter, Central Office Administrator, Terry joined the Akron Public Schools in 1989 as a severe behavior handicap teacher at Bochtel High School. In 1995, she became a work-study coordinator in the Special Education Department. She became a behavioral specialist in 2000 and a coordinator in the Special Education Department in 2001. It was from this assignment that she retired in 2023. Her responsibilities varied over the years. She provided training for paraprofessionals to help them work with students with disabilities. Terry was a home instruction supervisor at one point. She provided support and services for specialty schools. She was a hearing officer in the Student Services Department for students with disabilities who were being disciplined or suspended. In this role, she helped the students understand the consequences of their behaviors. She also helped the schools maintain positive visions and goals for these special education students. Terry was always focusing on getting the students back in school. She was their advocate. Thank you, Terry, for the 35 years of support and guidance you provided for all involved in the field of special education with the Akron Public Schools.
Next, Board Member Hall will recognize Central Office Staff Member Anna Klow.
All right, this is for you, Ms. Anna. So Anna was hired by the Akron Public Schools in 1989 to be a developmental handicap teacher at Rankin Elementary School. In 2000, she became a supplement service teacher. 11 years later, she served as a literacy coach for two years. Anna became an instructional specialist in 2013, where she remained until her retirement. Anna's responsibilities were focused on assisting classroom teachers on how to use various instructional practices and strategies to improve student learning. Her focus was on reading strategies. She was one, she was an advocate for social and emotional learning as well. She was involved in the Akron Reads program, the third-grade reading academy, and the third-grade guarantee. She also worked with families to help them better understand the strategies being taught to the classroom and how to support them at home. Anna was the ultimate teaching coach in and out of the classroom. Anna's 35 years supporting the learning process Anna's 35 years supporting the learning process are greatly appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Anna.
I, too, don't like microphones and have buyer's remorse as well. I feel very privileged to have been part of Akron Public Schools. I was part of the graduating class from Central Howard, the first group of students to go all the way through, and have had an awesome career at Akron Public Schools. I am truly blessed as I've gotten to work in virtually almost every building in the district in some capacity or another. And what I've found is amazing students, amazing staff members, amazing teachers and administrators. They enriched my practice and touched me personally as well. So for that, I am very thankful. Next, we're going to recognize field administrator Addie Daniel by Board Member Alexander.
Man, I get it good tonight. Somebody else I'll work for, work with for a number of years at Central Howard and North, and so this is, this is a pleasure. Addie Daniels, field administrator. Addie Daniels served at Akron Public Schools as a tutor and substitute teacher prior to being hired as a full-time teacher in 1994. Her initial assignment was an English teacher at North High School. In 1995, she moved from Bochtow to Bochtow High School for five years. She taught comprehensive communications and English. And in 2000, she became an assistant principal and eventually principal at Central Howard. She became principal at North High School in 2006 until 2013, when she worked at, in student services. In 2014, she became academy principal at Ellet CLC, where she remained until she retired from Ellet CLC in 2024. Being an academy principal requires considerable organization and communication skills. Academies are the heart of each high school. Addie was responsible for keeping students focused on requirements of the academy sponsor. She was also responsible for keeping lines of communication open with academy sponsors. This was in addition to her normal duties and responsibilities as an assistant principal. Thank you, Addie, for 30 years of dedicated service to Akron Public Schools.
Okay, first of all, giving honor to God. He made it possible for me to do 32 years at Akron Public Schools. One of the individuals that you might remember is Dr. Dees. Dr. Dees gave me some great advice. She told me, Addie, always be firm and always be fair, and I think I lived up to that. That's why I was able to survive Akron Public Schools. Anyway, I want to thank the board for this honor, and I really deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna recognize office support staff Deborah Selby by Member Joel Perry.
Selby's not here tonight either? Okay. So Deborah Selby was hired by the Akron Public Schools on April 9, 1984, as school secretary at Heiminger Elementary School. She remained at Heiminger Elementary until it closed after the spring of 2007. She then became the school secretary at Mickey Bright CLC, where she remained until her retirement this past spring. Deborah was viewed as a very organized, accurate, and effective secretary who managed the office in a most conscientious manner. She had excellent secretarial skills, but also displayed her caring interpersonal side for staff, students, and parents. She often went above and beyond her secretarial responsibilities to help. She served as school treasurer and technology coordinator at Heiminger Elementary. She was known to volunteer to help in the lunchroom and to do playground duty. She assisted the PTA and teachers when they needed help by typing for them. She was all about making, helping make the school an efficient and caring place to work. Akron Public Schools thanks you, Deborah, for your dedicated service to the students and teachers for the last 40 years. Thank you, Deborah.
And lastly, we're going to recognize custodial staff member Joseph Ruchuka. In 1975, Joe Ruchuka was hired as an itinerant custodial worker with the Akron Public Schools. One year later, he was hired as a full-time custodial worker and was assigned to Bochtow High School. He has served the district as a full-time custodian for 48 years. He has worked at one elementary school, which was Betty Jane School. The three middle schools he worked in were Perkins, Goodyear, and Goodrich Middle Schools. The high schools included Bochtow, North, Garfield, Central Howard, Kenmore, and STEM High Schools. In addition to working at the various schools, he worked at the administration building, Akron Opportunity Center, and the Distribution Center. He is retiring as the custodian of STEM High School. In addition to his custodial responsibilities, Joe was always ready and willing to help assist teachers and others in his building when needed. He was viewed as a person who was cooperative, dependable, and willing to go out of his way to help when needed. Simply put, he was a good worker who got along with the building staff. Thank you, Joe, for 49 years of dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools.
I want to thank the board for this. I worked at a lot of buildings. I remember working when I was a, as a boy help. I worked at Hornet Schoolhouse, which was called Thomas Town. It's a friend of mine, Don Watson. He was a plumber back in the day. But anyway, put it this way, I'm a KJ. I work, I do karaoke in the evenings. I do it at Bar O'DeMario's in the Falls. And I work on cars, too. So if you never need a car, work on it.
And computers. Computer tech thing.
A little bit of everything. But I appreciate working all these years. I've met a lot of great people, a lot, been around a lot of people.
My best, my best friend.
Anyway, I appreciate you guys for putting up with me. I met, I know him really good. I know a lot of people in here. Worked, worked with a lot of people. It's nice meeting you, too.
It's rough for me.
I want Don to take over a little bit.
I'm, I'm real shy. I was most courteous in high school. I'm from Baton Rouge. I've been up here, came up May 29th of 72. And around 76, I met Joe. We did karaoke. But I hired him with the Akron Schools as a plumber, July 1, 76. Bill Spratt, he hired me in. But I did a lot of plumbing jobs, side jobs, Reverend Morgan. And I did the plumbing of the heating system at the church over here on Perkins, Zion AME Church. But Larry Johnson was my assistant. He did the electrical work on the heating units. I did the plumbing. He did the electrical. Another great guy. But yeah, I want, I wanted to get up here and honor Joe. He's a great guy. Very, very honest guy.
Thank you, guys, for all, all the years, all the years I worked with everybody.
Thank you so much for your service. I appreciate it.
I had 38 years, 36 years as a plumber. I bought two years military. It gave me 38 years.
Awesome.
I retired January 31st of 12. I told them for 36 years, I was a pipe fitter. They hired me in as a plumber. Mr. Jim Avery, he was a, he, he was a bellhop at Mayflower Hotel, and he came with the school board as a plumber. And I didn't know much about plumbing. Jim Avery taught me plumbing.
Nice, very nice.
That is something.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I just want to say this about Joe. Joe has been here for a long time, and one of the things Joe did, I thought, I've always remembered and liked about him, I don't know if you guys remember the summer youth employment program. Joe always made sure that our kids had a job during, during the summer, and he took our kids in with no, no problem, even if we needed extra kids to work so they could have an employment. We called Joe, Joe would take them. So our kids got a lot of opportunities to work with Joe, too. So thanks, Joe.
Thank you again to all of our folks being recognized tonight. Being a teacher, serving our students, is just such an amazing gift. And again, we just thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. We can just do a final round of applause for everybody. Thank you. And we do have requests to address the board, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Donnie Brooks to approach the mic. And as he's approaching, just a reminder that you do have three minutes to address the board. We are not being rude, but anything that needs addressed will be referred to our superintendent. And thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. You have the floor.
Thank you. Like what Coach Donald said, he was my old phys ed teacher from 2003 to 2005. So again, congrats. I'm Donnie Brooks. I am the CEO of the Akron Baseball Project Incorporated. I'm a former baseball player, born and raised Akron, Ohio. Played college ball, played a little farm league. Just got hired at Akron Public Schools, May of 2024, as a sub-teacher. I wanted to come back home to teach our youth. I'm here in front of the board today. I want to get the Akron Baseball Project Incorporated into our Akron Public Schools district. Baseball saved my life. Baseball is, how they say, America's pastime. I think that's pretty, how should I say? Subtle, I would say. I want baseball for my Akron Baseball Project, not just baseball, but education. We teach education for our youth. I've had three camps. I've had one in August of last year, had a camp in February this year for a winter camp, had a spring clinic in May, and now we're having our fourth camp in August, once again, for back to school. I'm approaching my first year of my nonprofit, July 12th, one year. I played at Bochtow High School. I played for West Akron Little League. I played for Copley, Farah Line, Akron U. I played Farm League, Flying Squirrels. Played all around. And I want to bring my nonprofit into Akron. I want something new. No offense, I'm just tired of seeing the same thing. It's not working. I'm a product of Akron Public Schools, 2009. It's been 15 years since graduation, so it's been a while. And I want something new. I see money is going towards other things, well, things from the past. I want things to go towards something for the present, for the future, something new, something fresh. And these kids today, they don't understand the past because they weren't around. And they can Google it and or YouTube it, but they won't understand it. They're understanding today. And I feel like with me being 32 years old, I can get to these kids. I have gotten to these kids. And I want to educate the youth, not just on hitting a ball or catching a ball. I want the Akron Baseball Project to save lives, to get them out of trouble. If they are going through something at home, we will take care of them. I want this to be more than just a summer program. I want this to be an all-year program because baseball can be all year round. I play baseball all year round. So I just wanted to approach the board this evening, and I hope you guys heard everything. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Where can I get that suit?
It's a one-of-a-kind.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And I'm surprised you didn't mention that you were in my drama club at Bochtow, too, but I'll let you slide on that. But congratulations and thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Artry, President Artry. Just want to recognize a couple of, acknowledge a couple of days that we're gonna spend this month. Of course, we have already acknowledged Independence Day. Father-daughter Take a Walk Day is July 7th. Disability Independence Day is July 26th. For all those that are aunts and uncles, you have a day, too, July the 26th. System Administrator Appreciation Day, the 26th of July. Love is a Kind Day, July the 27th. And parents, your day is July the 27th. Had a great opportunity with the Carnegie Foundation in meeting other superintendents, other school districts. This work began prior to my arrival here, and upon coming to Akron, I was asked if I wanted to continue doing the work, and I agreed to it, and certainly looking forward to hopefully having the opportunity to apply for a continuation of this work that we're doing around not just academics, but also leadership and other things that the Carnegie Foundation has been very generous and gracious to Akron Public Schools for allowing us to be a part of the, of the work. It was great meeting school districts from across the United States who are dealing with some of the same concerns that we have and, but it was great having a thought partner to work with. So look forward to hopefully being able to continue to do that work. I had a phenomenal time. Don't know how else to, to word it. One thing about Akron, we definitely know how to cook and, and we love to eat. And I had myself a great time as the guest speaker for the Order of Eastern Star, Phoenix Chapter Number 96, who are my sisters in the order. And so, and thank you so much to Ms. Patricia Brown. Well, it was at the Patricia Brown event, but thank you to the worthy matron of the Phoenix Chapter Number 96 Order of Eastern Star for inviting me. And it was, it was really great. This is gonna benefit our scholars, where they will receive scholarships from this. So it was great to have any opportunity to be with them and, and really just eating. I never saw so much cake in that all my life, but I tried to eat as much as I could. Congratulations to Schumacher CLC for coming in fourth place, and Helen Arnold, who placed in the top 16 out of 88 at the 2024 Technology Student Association Annual Conference Junior Scholarship Sprint National Competition. And this was held in Orlando, Florida. And so, want to just say hats off to Schumacher and also Helen Arnold Schools for doing phenomenal work. Thank you to the principals. Thank you to the teachers there and the staff for working with and supporting our scholars. I want to provide just a very brief update on the ICO situation, which we are working very diligently behind the scenes, trying to navigate that process and to... navigate that process and to sort of bring a resolution to it, to the board. My goal, board members, is to hopefully bring that at the next board meeting. I really don't want to delay it any longer if I can avoid not doing that. I don't really want to have a call meeting and I don't want, I definitely don't want to push it into August. I'm trying to resolve it and bring it to our June, July twenty-second meeting. We will have a meeting, informational meeting with the ICOs. And then we're also going to be meeting with the initial proposed vendor and trying to bring some completion to this situation. And so we'll, we'll come back on the twenty-second, at the twenty-second board meeting and bring, hopefully bring a propose, proposal that we can all live with and work with at that meeting. So a lot will be going on behind the scenes between this week and next week. So just, just to kind of inform our board and to let you know about that. And I think that that completes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for superintendent? Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, so you're saying that you have been in conversation with the individuals as it relates to the van, van drivers?
We had a meeting with one of those, the van drivers. Supposed to be two, but timing, due to timing, but we did have one. And I will be then having a meeting, not this week. It'll be scheduled for next week. Informational meeting where hopefully this week we will have been able to talk with the vendor, sort of bring and see where things are, because timing is really kind of of the essence right now. So we've got to have the meeting with her first. Because I want to, yes, others have met with her, but I want to meet with her myself to kind of get in a clear understanding. We also want to discuss some of the things that we would like to make sure that she's able to do in terms of depending upon the numbers of students. We roughly have twelve hundred, but I think we actually may have a little bit more than that this year. Just depends. Our numbers fluctuate, especially when you're talking about our McKinney Vento students and our special ed students. The numbers just, they fluctuate. But I want to make sure what we're asking her contractually, if she is going to be able to do that and agree to that. But I also want to have conversation with her in terms of some of the concerns that were kind of brought to our attention and making sure that we're able to resolve that. Great conversation came out of the meeting. Because what we did realize, I, I'm speaking for me, is that transportation is an, is an area that we are greatly understaffed. And it's something that we're going to have to fix so that we can be more efficient and effective in that area. It was, like I said, it was great conversation. Don't have a problem meeting. It just has to be at the appropriate time. And this was the appropriate time. And so we're definitely taking back the information that was brought into our discussion as we are planning to move forward. But we will have an informational meeting. I'll meet with as many of the ICOs as would like to and was, and as possible next week.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam Chair, may I have just one additional question?
Yes.
So just, just, just for clarification. So it is the intent of the administration to try and work with the individual that you had originally recommended to enter into a contract with that the board did not approve?
I want to know if, number one, if she's still willing to work with us. And if she is, what would that look like? I don't want to kind of get into the conversation here because there could be some different scenarios of what that ultimately could look like. It may not happen at all. Or it could be in part, and part with our ICOs. So that's why I want to have a meeting with both sides and both, so that we can kind of bring a resolution to all of this. This will be, and I'm glad you're asking that question, member, board member Sykes. This will be a temporary situation for this next school year. But it will also allow for us between now and, and December to be working on something for the following school year. So that we have this done early and well in advance in preparation for the following school year. So that's, but I'm, I'm trying to move as fast as we can on just getting. I just want to make sure that we're able to open doors this year and have that transportation. But it is not something that we're going to be done with after this year. We're going to continue to work on this between now and December for the following school year.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam Chair, just when you say ICO, you, you mean independent? Independent contractors? So the public know you're talking about the van drivers?
Yes, the van, our van drivers.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for superintendent? Seeing none, next item on the agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. First, are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four?
I move to approve.
Second. It's been moved by Member Perry, seconded by Dr. Molinar. Is there any discussion? Member Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. I know last meeting, we acknowledged and honored Ms. LaMonica Davis. And when I wanted to say something, I looked over, she was gone. But I just wanted to say just thank you to her. You know, Helen Arnold is my great aunt. And a school being named after a family member who put so much into the school system at this board, you know, got a lot of things done and accomplished. It's an honor to have a principal from the beginning to now, to still be at that school, doing the work for the children and making a difference. So I just wanted to say, just on the record, and maybe she's watching it, just thank you. You know, for my family, we just are honored to have her. And we're thankful that she was selected to be the right person to run that school. So thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms., excuse me. Motion carries six oh. No, I had Ms. Jackson, and she's not here.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have our personnel recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories six through seventeen, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Mr. Perry?
I do have one question. I see item six point one-three, description, social worker. I'm very cognizant right now of our adding, you know, expenses to our budget. Is this a new position or is this a reclassification of a position?
It is, but it's being funded out of title. Yeah. Yes.
So it's a grant and our budget remains the same in light of this new position?
Yes, because there's only one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Dr. Molinar?
Thanks. Along the same lines, I know I asked a question about also six point one-three. And it said if, the answer was if the funding sources, the grant funding sources are not appropriate, the position may be reviewed to transfer to the general fund. So my question is, the way this position is written, if it's not able to be a hundred percent grant funded and the funds need to be transferred to the general fund, will the position as written need to come back to the board to use for general funds? Or can the position be transferred to general funds based off of today's approval alone?
Yes, that can be just done. But no, we would bring that back to the board because when it was brought to me, it was brought to me as it coming from the grant. Initially, it was title, but it was through, through a grant, federal grant. So if anything changes with that, then I would certainly bring that to the board. Now, to be honest, I think that we, one of the things that we're lacking is not having social workers because they play such a vital, vital role in schools. But given this particular environment, I think it would be a great opportunity as long as we can fund it without it touching our general fund. But I would bring it back if, if something changed.
Thank you. Member Hall.
I just want to say one thing, well, two, actually. Every week, I, I count up the retirements and the resignations. And it seems like lately we've been having at least twenty-plus teachers or staff resigning. You know, so I know, you know, we're doing a cut and laying off, but we can probably keep some or bring some back. But I start to think about, is it really about the kids? Because people are resigning like crazy. And it's like, you know, we say we're here for the kids, we're doing it for the kids. But people are resigning like crazy. So like really, what is it? I'm not, I know we don't know, you know, how to answer, but you know, really, what is it about? You know?
So this is not abnormal.
Okay.
This is something that happens in every school system and in every state that I've ever worked in.
Okay.
This is just, this is just a normal part of what happens in school operations with staffing. December is another time when people retire because they only needed a half of the, of the year. Or maybe they only needed to work to September or October, but they work on a complete half a semester. Then you have students graduating from college who come on and they start in January. You know, I started in, in half the year when I was teaching. So it's not something that's abnormal. What, but given the fact that we have had retirements and resignations, we also have not, you know, teachers that are on the list for recall. So we're able then to plug in those people. And the list is certainly decreasing each, each time. So it's a give and take. But this is not anything that's abnormal for us to be in this situation. And even though we don't necessarily, to this date, need to recruit, we are still functioning in that light because we never know when we need, when we will have to. So we want, we want to keep the, the doors open for people to apply. And we encourage them to apply because we never know what we're going to need between now and the time school opens. So that's a long time, but yeah.
Okay.
So this is not, this is not abnormal.
Okay. And then one more thing, I'm sorry. We're still on six point nine area, right? The air and six, something?
Discussion in personnel.
That's still six, okay, okay, okay. And I just see right here, what is it, six point eight-ish? Alan Jones? I don't know if you were doing something or saying something today, but I just want to say, I think we, he's the new director of safety and security.
Well, he will be if the board approves.
If the board approves, okay. So I just wanted to approve, no. I just wanted to say, just knowing Mr. Jones coming from Akron Police Department, stand-up guy, a great asset to have in Akron Public Schools. Just retired from the police department and I think he will make a wonderful addition to our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
I'll be brief, just one more thing. I'll second what she says about Mr. Jones. I've known him for a long time now, since I've been a lawyer, you know, twenty years over the years. Very good guy, looking forward to having him on board. But also want to acknowledge six point two, which what we were discussing earlier about reinstating from reduction in force. There were four teachers that are being called back. And it's very important to note, they're coming back. On that list, I think you were talking about Dr. Robinson, of teachers that are waiting to come back in our school system. So I want to acknowledge those four teachers coming back to our school system in August if we approve this portion.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? So my colleagues took away my fire, but I also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Perry's comments. Seeing those rips come back to us. I know at the time it was hurtful and painful as we had to make those decisions. But seeing that we're able to bring some of those folks back and it's continuing is worthy of acknowledgement. And then also, item six point eight, Officer Alan Jones. I have to also as well acknowledge him and his longstanding commitment to our community in our schools, with the parade for many, many years. I think you're going to be a wonderful addition should the board find that to be its will. And so happy to have you again, if it is the board's will. But I think it is a definite plus for the district. Someone who knows and loves our children and our community. So thank you for that. And so that being said, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry, just to your point, Board Member Perry, Mr. Effinger is also, it's not listed as a recall because it is, it is, but it isn't. Because he's in, he's going into a different position. But that is also a person that was on the list. One of, an outstanding employee that we were able appropriately for him to. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
So my thunder is stolen. But that's okay. Mr. Alan Jones, if you could, Jones, if you could please stand so that everyone will be able to acknowledge and recognize who you are for the outstanding work that you have done in this community. And so we certainly want to say thank you. And thank you for coming to Akron Public Schools and welcome aboard. The real work now begins. Thank you.
Madam President, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I thought this is the appropriate time. Yeah, I'm going to say congratulations to, I'm going to call him Al B. Because you, back in the day, that's what we called him. But Alan will be, he's always been a good individual. He's always worked with our kids, always dedicated to kids, dedicated to the city of Akron. Just very dedicated. And so we are happy to have someone like Alan to come here. I know the work that he's done in the past will continue to go on here and it'll probably do even better. So congratulations, my brother. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we will have approval of the resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category twenty-two. They are in proper format and I move for their approval, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, I move to approve it.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes? Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Next, we have our business affairs recommendations. Is there a motion to approve business affairs?
I make a motion.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items for discussion. First, I want to say thank you to administration. I know I ask a lot of questions, but I got a lot of answers this week. And so just to kind of build off of some of those answers, I know I had a question, twenty-four six, the money spent on marketing and how the marketing is for student recruitment, which is an ongoing effort that we have in our district. And I understand, you know, as we talked in our last meeting about vouchers and the students who are leaving the district. And this is about bringing students back to the district. So help, thank you for answering those questions. Thank you for helping me understand that. And I wanted to talk about that now to say thank you. And so our community also understands that we are diligently working hard to bring students back to the district. And I, I would be interested in any kind of presentation. And I, I would be interested in any kind of presentation to show the return on investment of this, right? If we spend, you know, $30 to bring back a student, that's going to be $8,000 to have that student back and just see the use of those funds. I think that would be really, really wonderful. So that was the first thing I wanted to say, is thank you and looking forward to more information. And then the second thing I want to say was item 24-17, the money for the two plays, I'm going to actually open this now so I don't say it wrong. We have Six the Musical and Harry Potter, The Cursed Child coming this fall. So that's for the vendors to get ready for that. And the students work so hard and the staff work so hard. And last year, there was actually a competition that the students put together a commercial. They, I think, wrote and directed and submitted an application to be one of the schools, to win, to be able to do the Harry Potter play that they're doing for this fall. And these funds that we're using are actually for ticket sales and concession sales. And so if people don't come to see the plays that the students and the staff are working so hard to earn, we can't keep doing this. So I want to spend the time to also say congratulations to the students who are able to do this and the staff, but also to encourage everyone to continue coming out and supporting our schools. And one of our teacher emeritus actually said that there's a student here possibly documenting who's involved in the theater program that's putting on some of these. So if there are any media people here looking for a student or a story about our schools or our students, there might be someone in the audience for you to talk to that can point you in a direction. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion around our business affairs items? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from 24.21.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, 5-0 with one abstention on 24.21.
Thank you. So next is the President's Report. So by now, you guys should have received an inquiry about a board retreat on August the 10th. I believe everyone has responded, so looking forward to that so that we can continue to be the best versions of ourselves. And I am soliciting retreat topics from you, so please feel free to reach out and send me those. But one of the focus items will be team building, so I'm looking really forward to that. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention, it should be on all of your calendars if you're available, coming up on July the 20th, East Akron Community Day will be taking place at Joy Park. And so I have secured a table just so that we can be a presence in the community and engage with our constituents and others. So please feel free to reach out or drop by if you're able to come out and be engaged with our community. That is from noon to 5:00. And then lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge the grants that we already voted on in the consent agenda from G A R. Thank you so much for the education initiatives grant. We had 23 different educators receive grants for 17 of our schools. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. And then also Martha Holden Jennings Foundation provided a grant for our STEM Robotics League. And then Northeastern Ohio has provided a grant for tennis teams, I believe at North and one other. Let me just say that out loud so that folks know they can join tennis teams at North and Garfield, courtesy of a grant from Northeastern Ohio Tennis Association. Thank you so much for that. And that concludes my President's Report. Next, we will have our Treasurer's Report.
No report.
Thank you. And now we will move on to committee reports. First, we have legal contracts and board policy. Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. There are eight policies that you'll see in the section here that we would like to motion to approve for a third and final reading. This includes, there are three policies that are Neola updates, 26-23 student assessment, 26-23 third grade reading guarantee, 53-10 health services, those are Neola updates. 0147 compensation is a Neola update, but it was brought up by legal. And then in our January board retreat, our president described our goal this year as a policymaking board. So the other four policies up for a third and final read were brought by the board. So we have 0165 regular meetings, 131 legislative, 155 committees, and 5120 assignment within district. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will have to take these one at a time, is my understanding?
Correct.
And so the first policy for our consideration, and we will entertain a motion for, is 0131 legislative for a third and final reading. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. The next policy for your consideration is 0147, compensation. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. The next item for your consideration, policy 0155 for committees. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And the next policy for your consideration is 0165.1, regular meetings. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next item is policy 2623, student assessment and academic intervention services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And the next policy for your consideration is 2623.02, third grade reading guarantee. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And next is policy 5120, assignment within the district. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Hall. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board and the public. You may remember, it seems like years ago where we talked about redistricting and changing this district and what that meant for our community, in particular, our schools. So at the time, we talked about how it was important to go ahead and move along because the superintendent had had various meetings throughout our community and the community had had opportunities to come before this board and to speak. But there were also some concerns about whether or not we were changing the rules as far as public participation and the public being able to come and to, and to speak when there was a change in what was happening with the assignments within our districts. And at that time, we passed the legis, we passed the resolution, but it was forward, I asked that it be referred to committee to make sure that any changes that took place that eliminated the public participation and the number of times that the public could come before the board to speak when there was a change as it related to redistricting, that we put all of that back into a piece of legislation. And that's what we have done. That's what 5120 does tonight. Everything is back and hopefully is back to stay. And there was a little confusion about whether or not after, there were some changes with our assignments in our schools as related to redistricting, whether or not the administration had to actually come back. And because of that confusion, then the public was really concerned. And in particular, one of our pastors that's not here because of a tragedy that he's dealing with, but I want him to know we heard him. That we wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that the public has an opportunity to speak, that the public is always our first priority in making sure as a board that we care about what you think and that the change was done simply for the reason that we stated at the time, to try to expedite the situation because we felt that there had been a number of meetings that the superintendent was not required to have, but had, that the staff had showed up, that the community had come out to. So I say to the community that, that this was a promise that we made to the community, that we would make sure that the legislation was changed back and that this legislation will hopefully be a permanent piece of legislation that will allow the community at all times to be able to come before this board when we make significant, significant changes as it relates to redistricting. And also, we wanted you to know that when we say that we will look at this, we will go back, we will come back to you with the changes that you said you wanted, that we will actually do it. So this is a promise made and a promise kept. And I think this legislation is better. I think that the administration had an opportunity to weigh in on this legislation. We've made a few changes, all for the better. So now, instead of looking every now and then as what's happening in our schools and whether or not we need to change children, whether or not we need to do some moving around, that it won't just happen every now and then, it would happen every year. And that was the recommendation from the superintendent because he said, you know, it's not something we need to just do when we think we need to do, we need to do it every year. So we want to look at, so when we look at a situation in North, where originally, we, North really was not even expected to be open. But because we had not looked at what was happening with North every year and the new students that was coming into the area and was increasing the population in the North cluster, that we found ourselves of, oh, we have these additional children. And that was one of the reasons why we had to make sure that we made the change in redistricting in that particular cluster. And so, so I just want you to know that everything is back, that the legislation is here, it's a promise made, it's a promise kept. And again, I thank so much for the, thank the community for coming out and letting us know how disturbed you were by what was happening. And hopefully, you will understand that we will work to continue to make sure that when we make a promise, that we keep our promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Well said. Is there any other discussions around policy 5120? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And lastly, is policy 5310, health services for a third and final reading. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee again. Next, we have Finance and Capital Management Committee. Mr. Perry?
I want to remind the public that we have an email address, apslevyinfo@gmail.com. That's monitored every single day by our Chief Diversity Officer, Dr. Carla Chapman. Any questions, comments you have about the levy, ask them, send those emails. She's checking it all the time, apslevyinfo@gmail.com. Our next meeting is August 19th at 4:30.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, she checks it after she gets off work.
Okay.
Yes.
24/7.
Definitely off after work.
After work.
Next is our Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee. Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. We have our meeting August 6th at 4:30, so nothing to report right now.
Thank you. And then we have our Equity Committee. Mr. Alexander?
No report, but we will meet on August the 5th.
Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, we do have a levy presentation from Attorney Diana Fidal.
Excuse me, Madam President. As she walks up, correction on the date for the Instructional Policy meeting is August 5th.
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, am I good to begin?
Yes.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here today. Good evening to everyone. I was asked to provide a high-level overview of some of the rules and regulations for school boards as it relates to levy bond issues. I just wanted to start out by sort of setting a framework for the presentation. This presentation I'm making for informational purposes only. And I will also say that this is not an exhaustive presentation. The body of rules and guidance and laws and things like that on any levy campaign are vast. And so what I tried to do today was create a foundation, going back to the key statutes and the key guidance to kind of serve as a foundation to continue a conversation. Many of these inquiries are very fact-specific, and so it will inherently require follow-up. and any questions are often individualized and also fact-specific, which is why if there are any questions, I will follow up with you after the presentation so that any, an accurate answer can be given and proper weight is given to the specific facts of the scenario presented. For the purposes of the presentation, and this is the lawyer in me, I went back to the key statutes. I think that right now, there's a lot of presentations and pamphlets and information, it's overwhelming, and so I tried to break this down as simple as possible and get back to the basics so that your mindset and your framework are kind of following those same rules over and over so they're top of mind and that you can help, hopefully it will help you think through situations as they may arise. Again, I will, you know, you can always, if you're talking about compliance issues and things like that, you can certainly always follow up and ask the president who can ask me, or you are welcome to speak directly to me as well. So specifically, I'm going to talk about Revised Code Section 9.03, Revised Code Section 3315.07, and an overview of some guidance that the Auditor of State has given us. And then I'll summarize here with a few takeaways to hopefully round out the presentation. So the first section is Revised Code Section 9.03, and this statute lays out pretty nicely what a board and you, individual board members, cannot do. And those are two things. One, support or oppose the passage of a levy or bond issue by using public funds, our fund, dollars that you oversee as board members, and to compensate an employee of the board for time spent on any activity to influence the outcome of an election, and that means a levy campaign or a bond, and a bond issue. So that's our framework. Here's our statute. The statute also gives us some things that we can do, three things. One, you can use public funds to establish a newsletter or other means to communicate with your constituents or others that are affected by the levy campaign. But this has to be neutral, it cannot be an advocacy piece, it has to be facts, just facts. Two, you can compensate employees for attending meetings or giving presentations that provide basic information, again, factual information, even if the event has to do with influencing an election. But again, the content from any employee or board member must be neutral and fact-specific to the topic of the levy and bond issue. And then three, you can use your own time to speak in support of or in opposition of any levy or bond issue. So first statute, two big don'ts, a couple of do's with a lot of nuance. Now, there's also another statute specific to school funding issues that in a lot of ways dovetails and goes hand in hand with the 9.03 section that we just talked about, and that's Revised Code Section 3315.07. And so again, the can do's look very similar to the other statute, which is that you as a Board of Education can disseminate information on your school programs, which includes your facilities, your funding, your employees, things like that, and you can do that in a neutral, fact-specific way, right? So you can permit employees to attend public meetings, again, speaking about those very fact-specific things regarding the status of your district. So the same do's are in this statute as well. The same do-nots are also in this statute as well, and that is again, a reminder that public funds cannot be used to support or oppose the passage of a school levy or bond Now, these statutes, it seems like they're very specific and clear, but in practice, sometimes the lines can be a bit blurry, which is why a lot of these inquiries are very fact-specific. For better, for worse, our auditor has released guidance. This is an important document, but it is not necessarily legally binding, but it is great information that we have that we can refer to and use when we're in situations where we are not sure what to do. Just to give you an understanding, a little bit about this guidance, it was published very recently, so this is fresh information, and it was specifically put out, like I said, to gear towards school boards, but would obviously be used for any political subdivision that can put a tax issue on the ballot. The format is generally a question and answer, a best practice and example, and I put in here some highlights of, I think, key FAQs that would likely, could be top of mind for you, or something that I think all the board members need to be aware of. Now again, when I said at the beginning that this isn't exhaustive, part of what I mean by that is this auditor guidance went into nine different categories of information, and those include things of using district website, of using surveys, of using information sharing, a levy committee, district resources, sign, shirts, facilities. So there was a number of topics discussed, and I wanted to hone in on some that I think are key for a board. So, so the first one is are levy campaign restrictions applicable for Board of Education members, district administrators, administrators, and district personnel? Yes. All of us in the room would be bound by the same restrictions. Again, you're in the safe lane if you're do, if you're using, if you're only reporting factual information. It's when you get into the advocacy space where you have to be very careful about not doing it while being compensated with public dollars. And there will always be people who talk about, I have a First Amendment right, and so on and so forth. Yes, you do, on your own time and not while being compensated in any way, shape, or form by the board. And that can mean a lot of different things depending on your position. For board members, you know, your time being compensated is at board meetings, and so at board meetings, any advocacy related to the levy should not be brought up whatsoever. Next, may district administrator or staff or Board of Education member play a role in the formation of or participate on a levy committee? Yes. But same nuances. The activity cannot be, must be clearly outside times when district administrator, staff, or board members are compensated to be present or part of a district-sponsored event, okay? So that requires a sort of level of nuance of where am I going, who's paying me, what hat am I wearing? Is it an official capacity, is it a personal capacity, things like that? So again, you can be a part of those things, but we have to stay within that framework of not any public dollars compensation. Next, can district administrators or staff advocate for the levy on their own time when not being paid by the district? I feel like I'm a broken record right now, but the answer is yes, because it is your own time. I think an important nuance in the answer to this one is the last line where there's a notation that says that the individual may need to demonstrate the time spent in such activities was on their own time. And that's, I think, an important takeaway in the sense of any time you go to something where you're now in that advocacy role should be documented, right? So that if questioned, you always have, you always have ready to go, I was here at this point, at this time, for this reason, not being paid. Another question I polled was may the superintendent, treasurer, or a board member meet with the levy committee during school hours to answer their questions?
Actually, yes.
Yes. The superintendent, treasurer, or a board member may meet with the levy committee, but again, the information provided, the discussion must be neutral, accurate, and based on facts. If you blur the lines again into advocacy, then that would be an inappropriate topic of conversation at that meeting, and you'd have to be prepared to disengage from that Next one. May a member of the Board of Education participate in a levy campaign?
Yes.
Yes. A Board of Education member may participate in a levy campaign, but again, you must do so on your own time without using district funds. The auditor has specifically said here that this generally means, generally means not while attending any board meeting, any board function. I also included the best practice that the Auditor of State put in here, I'm not going to read it here, but it does give you a little bit more of a concrete example, an explanation of what might be an appropriate way to carry out being part of a levy committee, but I did include that there, which I did not include some of the best practices in the other ones. And I also included the example, which again, I'm not going to dive into now because, but I wanted to make sure that you had that easily available in one spot to give you an idea of how the auditor thinks that it would be an appropriate example of how to do this. So just a few high-level takeaways from sort of this general crash course in these statutes and guidance on public funds and levy campaigns. The key here is you can inform, but you can't influence if you're on, if you're being compensated as part of public funds. When in doubt, inquire. As I said before, these are, there's a lot of fact-specific things. You, as a board member, may be walking into a community meeting where you don't fully understand all the topics that will be discussed, you don't fully understand what people may bring up, may not bring up. So I think it's always important during this time to reflect on the meetings you're going to and think through, remind yourself, inform, but not influence. Always err on the side of caution, I know that's, you know, the, the simple lawyer answer for a lot of things, but it's always, you know, that's the safest bet for every board member, the whole board and the institution as a whole. Again, documenting your meetings and your time spent is important. And then the other final piece is making sure that there's a cohesive plan and training for the board and district staff as well, so that everyone is on the same page and we're all doing the right thing, which I know we all want to, and that's our goal, but sometimes there can be some sticky situations. So making sure that everyone, that there is a plan in place and good training will be very important. So I will stop there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So again, I'm sure you can forward questions?
Absolutely.
If you have anything else that comes up. Thank you so much.
Member Sykes? Yeah, just before she goes, I could just ask one question. You, may I?
Yes.
You did not cover the area of finance and contributions. So is there a particular section that deals with board members' contributions to the levy?
There is nothing in the statutes, but I can follow up with some best practices and guidance on that.
And so I do not see any new business before us, but there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee or official of the school district. Is there a motion?
I move to approve to go into the executive session.
It's been moved by Member Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. We are in recess at 7:08 PM. We are in recess at 7:08 PM.
Thank you and welcome back. We are reconvening into regular session at 9:33 PM. And so we do have additional items that we need to take action on. The first one is item 32.1. And this is the superintendent evaluation. Is there a motion?
So move.
A second. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander and seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make an amendment to one of the areas to read, continue to build strong collaborative relationships. So that would be under opportunities for improvement, continue to build, and strike out stronger. Can you get that? Did I get it right?
So we're adding continue to.
Continue to, right.
Bullet point two.
Right, and we're taking off the stronger and say strong. So you're taking the ER off the end of strong. So it becomes strong.
So we're in discussion. This is a motion within the discussion. So we have to second?
That's correct.
Is there a second for this amendment?
I second that.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion on the secondary motion to amend? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson. This is on the amendment.
So what we're voting on for clarity is to change the valuation to continue to build, and then the word stronger becomes strong.
Correct.
Okay. Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take another motion to accept it?
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Right. And we're taking off the stronger and say strong. So you're taking the ER off the end of strong, or so it becomes strong.
So we're in discussion. This is a motion within the discussion. So we have to second.
That's correct.
Is there a second for this amendment?
I second that.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion on the secondary motion to amend? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson. This is on the amendment.
So what we're voting on for clarity is to change the valuation to continue to build, and then the word stronger becomes strong.
Correct.
Okay. Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And lastly, 33.1, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And lastly, 33.1, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And lastly, 33.1, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And lastly, 33.1, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
So we have to take the latter motion to accept it.
We are, yes, but we already have the motion, Alexander and Hall. So now we're...
So now we were vote on accepting the evaluation with the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item is 32.2. And this is the evaluation of Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And next is item 32.3. This is North Coast Shared Services Alliance Service Agreement. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Perry.
Let me mention that this monetary comes from the ESC fund, not the general fund. So it's not going against our budget, the monies that we're requesting for this. So that's my reason for supporting this item.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And lastly, 33.1, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Dr. Molnar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We stand in adjournment at 9:37 PM. Thank you, everyone.
All right.